You know what? My mother likes to say, and I called her every day. If I was at work, I'd be like, hi, Mom. How's it going? I'm on my way home. Usually when I'm in the car. There are dates when I'm in my car. I call my dad every day. I call my mom every day. I never understand when people don't call their parents. Like, I don't understand. And my brother, my brother does. Every day I call my dad.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of September 22, 2022, was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 50 Nullis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey, 07470. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. We're going to do the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mr. Bubba.
Here.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Fatale.
Here.
Mrs. Kazan.
Here.
Mr. Pavlak.
Here.
Mr. Prasakos.
Present.
Mrs. Putup.
Here.
And Mrs. Wintick.
Here.
Okay. Dr. Toback, superintendent's report. Thank you.
So, good evening, everybody. Wanted to take a moment to thank all of our parents and all of our staff members for creating a wonderful environment for back-to-school night. The attendance at each event has been amazing. Now that we're moving past the pandemic, I think each feels like a reunion for each school community. So, thanks also to the PTO at each of our schools for having a strong presence at each of these events. Earlier this week, I shared a letter with the parent community that included information needed to opt their children out of the lessons that we shared with the community related to the new health and PE standards. We're approaching the end of the first week since the opt-out letter was distributed. While we had an initial push, we now have a handful of additional requests each day. But as of this afternoon, we have a total of 307 students whose parents have opted them out of these lessons. Those students come from a total of 251 families. Keep in mind that the total number of students, based on the grade levels where the content would be delivered in 1, 2, 4, 5, and 8, numbers 2,823. This means that 10.8% of the students enrolled at grade levels where the health and PE lessons would be delivered will not be participating. Interestingly, with the distribution at the middle school level, there are only 21 students who have been opted out. All the rest are elementary school opt-outs. This week, we received some complaints or concerns from parents that they were not given a receipt to keep as evidence that their child were opted out of the health and PE lessons at the grade level. So, keep in mind, as we've been doing for the past few months, we're following a process. At this point, we're gathering information in the central office about who would like to opt out. Once we know more, the district will send a letter to each parent who opted their child out of health and PE lessons. That'll actually come from the principal, because then it becomes a building-level activity. And at that point, the principal will also include information about what will be happening while other students are in the health and PE lessons. So, that way, parents know where their child will be placed during the time period where other students are taking the health and PE lessons. So, this past spring, the Board of Education transitioned to the new New Jersey School Employee Health Benefits Program. That's for all of our employees due to the significant savings. I asked Mr. Moffett to take a few moments to share the latest information we have with the Board of Education and the community since the recent announcement that there is going to be an increase beyond what was expected.
Yes, in the news, there was a recent meeting with the School Employees Health Benefit Commission. They approved renewal rates effective January 1, 2023, based on the commission's broker, Aon. They approved the rate increase that will affect our plans. Again, I'll go into a little bit in a minute, but the rates that will affect us will be 15.6% for medical benefits and a 7.8% increase in the RX card. Unfortunately, the district does not have specific information at this time. We'll have to wait for actual rates to be provided, and we anticipate those in November, when the New Jersey Pensions and Benefits Department will publish them. And they're taking into consideration changes in our open enrollment period, and then again, they'll publish those updated rates. The district has taken actions to cover the expected increase in the cost of employee benefit insurance, and will continue to monitor situation. And obviously, any information that's shared for this year, meaning the end of our fiscal year, will also be carried into our budget planning process for the future year.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. So, just a few things about item R1 under emergent, I'm sorry, under emergent administrative items, R1, you'll find a virtual remote instructional plan. So, I just wanted to take a moment to talk about that, because it may be a cause for alarm for some people, because it brings back some uncomfortable memories from the pandemic, and it includes a number of COVID-19 mitigation strategies. This is a New Jersey Department of Education requirement, and it represents a basic plan that we would follow only if we were required by the state or the Health Department to make a shift to remote learning. So, it is required. It's a plan, but it is not something we hope we'll ever have to take and put in action. I stated in my letter to the community approximately two weeks ago, the New Jersey Department of Education required school districts to ensure students take a benchmark assessment at the onset of the new school year in order to collect data on potential learning loss. Provide teachers with early intervention data, and to also provide parents with timely information about their child's current progress and potential learning needs. I'm happy to report that as of this evening, the majority of the Start Strong testing is complete in our schools with minimal interruption to our instructional time. It's important to note that these tests were only 45 to 60 minutes per subject and took a brief snapshot of student learning based on last year's academic standards for students in grades four to 10 in math and ELA, and grades six, nine, and 12 in science to provide information about potential support that's needed. These assessments are not used in any promotion or grade-level requirements. Now that the assessments have been completed, the schools will have data to review, to focus, support directly to our students who may benefit from intervention. Parents will also receive a score report on this assessment when the Department of Education provides the hard copies later this fall. At this point, there are no HIB cases to report. We do have a presentation about the new HIB laws with Mr. Burkholder.
Thank you. Mr. Burkholder.
Good evening. Good evening to the members of the board, and good evening to the educational community. It is nice to be here on a night when we do not have any HIB to report. There have been some changes to the HIB law that we wanted to bring to the attention of the public, and we wanted to specifically speak to the impact here in Wayne. In January of this year, there was some changes to the HIB law, but they just went into, in fact, for the beginning of this school year. We are very happy to report that the impact to Wayne will be minimal. Wayne Township Public Schools have consistently exceeded the expectations of the state. We've gone past the requirements of the state of New Jersey for quite some time now. In some states, excuse me, in some districts in this state, there is principals discretion of deciding whether or not there's HIB cases. In Wayne Township, we do not do that. Any student that brings a concern, we look into it, we investigate it, and we believe that that family and that child deserves an opportunity to hear how we're going to help them resolve that situation. Because of that, we were in very good position for the changes in the law. All of this information is available on our website. On the district website, there's an HIB tab, and all this information is included, including parent information directly for your families if you have any questions about the law or any provisions within the law. That document from the state is a little outdated, but we're hoping for a new document from the NJTO any day now. So, the first provision that has changed is that we are now required to ensure that our code of conduct or the consequences are included as part of the HIB policy. We have always implemented code of conduct, various counseling's and other supports for our students. We've always treated these cases holistically to help our students, the difference being now that they have to be embedded with the HIB policy, and that'll come before the Board of Education to review and vote for. The other provision being that if there are accumulated HIB cases of three or more, then we need to design an intervention plan to help those students, to prevent further bullying. We have always designed plans to support students in the event of repetitive bullying. The difference here being that this would be a template provided by the New Jersey Department of Education. We would be able to offer the parents, teachers, child study team, if applicable, and other people to come together to talk about how to help that student. So, this provision, minimal impact to Wayne, because we've always collected the information from those individuals, but in this particular case, we'll have a template that we can share with parents. There is a new provision in the law, again, minimal impact to Wayne, that we have to document the communication when we open an HIB case for the parents. We have always notified parents on day one of every single case to let them know that there is an HIB allegation, or your child has potentially been impacted by bullying, and we've always looked into it. The main difference being now that we are being asked of the state by documenting that. So, we've created some internal templates to ensure that we're able to track that and be able to make sure that we can prove to the state of New Jersey that all of those notifications have been made. But again, minimal impact, because our principals have always done this. This is probably the biggest change to the new law. Previously, Wayne has had one template, one form, for all individuals to report a bullying case. The state of New Jersey wanted to standardize that across the entire state, so therefore, they've created two separate forms, one for a caregiver, parent, guardian, et cetera, and another one for our staff members. The change here is minimal, because there's a new form. We have always launched bullying cases, and this will not stop us, even if we do not receive the form. If there's a verbal report, if a kid's upset coming back from the playground, if a parent emails in, any one of those things can launch a case, because at the end of the day, we would like to launch an anti-bullying case to figure out how we can help that student. A form is not going to stop that, but the form is required. So, if this family can fill that out in a timely manner, it gives us enough information to thoroughly investigate the case. We can ensure that everything the parent is concerned about is looked into, documented, and reported back to them. In the case of the parent not filling out that form, our school staff would take over and fill out that form to ensure that there's documentation to start that case. These are the new forms. The staff form is four pages. The parent and caregiver is three pages. It's just simply collecting any information from the families or from our staff that can ensure that when we begin that investigation, we can talk to any potential witnesses, any kids in the classroom, basically try to solve that situation as quick as possible to help those students and make sure that they feel comfortable in our schools. On page three of the parent form, there's a little confusion, because it asks, did the principal use discretion? And again, we do not have principals discretion in Wayne. So, any parent that reports any concern regarding bullying that's on a protected class that is affecting a student will be investigated. So, the third form is, yes, we are going to investigate, and we will take care of your children. This next provision really only applies to the Board of Education, and it simply says that if there is an appeal, if a parent disagrees with the finding or non-finding of an HIB case, then we are going to provide a redacted copy to the Board of Education so that they can see the entire investigation, to make sure that they know what the rationale was for the finding, they understand the witnesses, informations collected, et cetera. The important thing to note about this particular provision is, redacted case means that no privacy will be violated. If your child is not the one that is appealing, or not the one that's being discussed that night, their private information will be removed. So, it's really just to ensure that the family that has concerns about the bullying case, all the information's provided to the Board of Education, and they can answer their questions thoroughly. In this particular provision, there is no impact to Wayne. Language was added clarifying that the 10-day window, we have 10 full days to investigate an HIB case, 10 school days, and they're clarifying that this new form kicks off the 10 days. That's no impact to Wayne, because we have always immediately launched a bullying case if there's a potential of bullying, because we are not going to wait for a form. We're going to launch the case, even if the staff have to fill out the form, because, as we know, with social media and so many other things that can occur, we do not want a situation where things get worse while we're waiting for a form. Not going to happen. So, that has no impact to our bullying investigations in Wayne. And finally, there's simply a provision in the new law that suggests that we have to post what I shared with you on the first slide. There's a guidance document from the state of New Jersey for parents that explains the HIB law, various remediations and supports for parents. And again, that's on our website. It's been on our website, so there has been no impact to Wayne. So, to summarize, each and every one of these changes had very little impact to Wayne, because we have always taken a proactive response to immediately investigate any concerns, because at the end of the day, we want to make sure each and every case is looked into. If a student or their family was upset enough to say that they wanted to have this looked into, they deserve an answer to that. And quite frankly, on the other side of it, a lot of times, behaviors are a symptom. And if that student on the target side or the aggressor's side needs assistance, we want to help our students. We want to use this as a holistic way to teach them how to interact better with their peers, learn lessons, and just in general, have better relations with their peers. So, to finish up, we just wanted to say very, very quickly, a couple things. First, to our educators. We have amazing educators in Wayne, as I'm sure all of you guys know. We have dedicated administrators that have taken this law very seriously since its inception, professional school counselors who serve as our anti-bullying specialists that deeply care for our students and look after them. We have teachers and paraprofessionals and counselors and, excuse me, custodians and bus drivers and all forms of staff members, all roles, who have all taken the anti-bullying courses and look out for our students. Each and every year, we see some of those individuals looking out for our kids in various places. So, we want to say thank you to the members of the Wayne community, especially our educational community, for always looking out for our students. So, we are very lucky that they provide that environment. Secondly, we ask that our parents continue to help us. It does take a village, we've all heard that, but we need our parents' help. When there's a concerning arising, we understand the last few years, there's been a lot of anxiety. Please, come to us. And instead of adding to somebody's conflict or chaos, let's add our calm. Let's meet with our kids. Let's talk to them. Let's solve things in a respectful way, and let's make sure that we don't add to that chaos. So, parents, bring your concern early, talk to the school administration, trust that they care about your children. Absolutely no educators got into this work for standardized testing. I hate to break it to you, nobody wanted to do Start Strong. That's not what we got into the business for. We want to care for kids. So, the educators will take care of your children. Please, trust that. Check your devices, please check your child's devices. So much is happening on social media these days, and that information, that stuff is spilling over to the schools. So, continue to work with us, be proactive, and help the schools solve the problem. The educators want to help you. And finally, there have been a few cases where we've heard students come directly to the microphone at Board of Education meetings and suggest that they felt bullied in our schools. I want to ensure that each and every student understands that they are valued in the Wayne Public Schools. I do not want any child to feel that because of their race, religion, background, orientation, or for any other reason, that they are not accepted in our public schools. We care about them. They deserve to be here, and we will take care of them. So, please, continue, report your concerns. Our educators are here to care for you, and we will do our job, will continue to do our job. These changes are minimal, and we're going to continue. Whether or not the HIB cases all check the boxes to be HIB, each and every one of those situations is an opportunity to teach students how to make better choices and how to interact better with other kids. So, that's what we'll keep doing. So, thank you guys very much for giving us an opportunity to explain those changes to you tonight.
Mr. Burkholder. Mrs. Kazan has a question.
I'm going to ask you a question, Mr. Burkholder. You're not off the hook yet. I think the legislature made some great improvements in the HIB system and the law, but I just wanted to share with you a concern I received from a PTO mom in elementary school. And I said, well, hold up, we're going to make a presentation, and I don't see it in there, so I figured I'd wait, and I'll ask you now. This particular person thought it would be beneficial if we maybe did a tour, especially of the elementary schools, and explained the process to parents. Most of them are completely in the dark. Yes, it's on the website, they're not going to go looking for it until a problem arises, and then they're just going to be blindsided and not know what to do. A lot of them don't understand that they can file an HIB. And this was a concern for this PTO mom, who wanted to do some sort of awareness program at one of their PTO meetings. So, I did say I'd run it up the flagpole, so here I am, and I'm just throwing it out there as a suggestion. I think it's probably more beneficial to start at the elementary and then maybe middle school, which we obviously know a lot of the HIBs occur, but I don't know how many of those parents go to the PTO meetings like the elementary, so they would have the information on the website. But whatever you think is best, but I'm just throwing it out there as a suggestion from a parent.
We appreciate that suggestion. And obviously, the principals speak during back-to-school nights and various events about this, and obviously, we do what we can, but that's an excellent suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Toback?
So, it's not a question, but I know that Mr. Burkholder's West Virginia Mountaineers are playing tonight, so I know he wants to go, so I will not take much of your time. But I did want to just mention to the community that you heard from Mr. Burkholder how the Wayne Township Public Schools takes the HIB laws very seriously, and you heard how the new requirements have little or no impact on our district, and that's because we are well ahead of the curve when it comes to dealing with HIB cases. But the person driving that is, in many cases, Mr. Burkholder. So, we asked him, Mrs. Reishman and I have done more than enough in terms of presentations, we wanted him to do a presentation tonight, first of all, because it's his job, but also because he's the person that's out there. That's, for those of you who are parents in the audience, he's protecting your kids. He handles these cases along with the other HIB coordinators with great care. He takes these situations very seriously, so I just wanted to thank him for a moment, because ultimately, you have a lot to do with establishing a positive culture in each of our schools. So, we want to thank you, Mr. Burkholder, for all your work.
Thank you. Mr. Moffett, revisions to agenda items, please.
Yes, just two tonight. One, the first one is in Section T Emergent Human Resources under T3, which is approval of appointment of district staff. We're going to revise number nine. Alana Ware, location from Pacconect to Ryerson, and the PC number is 11-10-12backslashE and L, and the account number is 11-212-100-106-17-008. And the last item will be added tonight under X Emergent School Resource Legal. Number one will be added as approval of settlement agreement, and that action reads as follows. Resolve at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Hereby approves of settlement agreement and release in the matter of student ID number 6087618103, docket number 04948-2022, agency reference number 2022-34319, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same. And that concludes the changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. This portion, this portion of the meeting is open for agenda items only, for citizens to comment. Residents are asked to please state their first and last names and their town and the subject matter. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under Old Business. Thank you.
I'll move, Madam President.
I'll move.
Mr. Fatale seconded. Thank you. Come on up.
I was waiting for a vote. Cindy Simon-Wayne. First of all, as somebody who was the victim of vicious bullying as a child in a time where we were told sticks and stones will break our bones, and names will never hurt us, and don't be a tattletale, I just really want to say how important it is that the district has been doing what it has been doing in this area, but I also want to say, and this is not meant to point fingers at anybody, because this is such a challenging issue. Everyone applauded in the audience. I don't care what side of the aisle they're sitting on. Everyone agreed this is important. We're all clapping. But there were still so many children, particularly children with disabilities and children who are different in other ways, that are being, maybe it doesn't rise to the level of what counts as a bullying incident, but they are being picked on, and we really have to work to both support these children, but also teach other children to respect everybody for what makes them unique and that kind of thing. And the other thing I wanted to speak to is the website accessibility policy that's on the agenda. Obviously, that's good and required by the law, but I would also really like to suggest that we really help support teachers so that when they're using videos and stuff like that in classrooms, that they include captioning, and they include some of these other things that make the videos accessible to children who do have disabilities, but also, as somebody who teaches myself, those various things are also helpful for students with different learning styles as well. Thank you.
Seeing no one, Madam President, move to close the agenda public portion.
Second.
Mr. Pavlak was the second. Thank you. We have a retirement to celebrate this evening. Mrs. Wintick?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Christine Ryan, congratulations to Christine Ryan on the announcement of her retirement. Christine has worked for Wayne Board of Education for eight years. Christine has gone above and beyond for each child to learn each of their interests. She always put the students first and made sure that the classroom was prepared for the day and gathered materials for the day to ensure successful for all students. She has shown dedication and development, trustworthy relationship with her colleagues. It has been a pleasure having Christine as a member of the school community. We are confident that she will find the same success in her retirement and continue to touch lives of so many. We send her our best wishes and congratulations on a well-deserved retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wintick. We have a committee report this evening. Facilities, thank you.
Facilities Committee met this evening, myself, Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Fatale, Ms. Tibbetts, Mr. Romaine, and Mr. Moffett. We reviewed a number of the projects that have been ongoing all summer. We've run into some issues with projects because of supply chain issues, where we're unable to get parts. where we're unable to get parts or material to finish jobs. So we have many jobs in various stages around the district. Our video surveillance system is in place in all our buildings. So it is up and running. We had some, our generators. We had a power outage last week at Pines Lake, and our generator kicked on. And we're now looking at how much more we can put on to the generators that we do have. They are there to keep the basic functions of the building powered so that we don't have to shut the building down. I'm happy to report that the sidewalk on Verdant Avenue is complete for our students at Wayne Hills. Our Transportation Department is still in need of drivers. Our bus routes have been condensed and made more efficient. So we're spending less money on fuel. The emails of the bus passes this year seem to go well. Yes, there were a couple glitches, but we were able to get them straightened out. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlak. Mrs. Kazan, you have a legislative report, please.
Thank you for allowing me to deliver this at this time. I'll be very brief. On a quarterly basis, I attend the State Legislative Committee meetings in Trenton, where the School Board Association members, who are delegates to that committee, I represent the 40th District, are given an update on what's moving in the legislature, what's already on the governor's desk, et cetera. And this particular meeting was interesting for many reasons. Our guest speaker was Speaker Coughlin. And he gave us an interesting report. I'll just give you the highlights. He talked about the fiscal year budget and the prospect of providing tax levy cap flexibility, which means he's basically saying he might want to affect the 2% limit. Wasn't much of an elaboration on that, but it's something that we should be on the lookout for because that's going to affect our taxpayers. He talked about the same comment that Mr. Moffett made about the increase in health care. And we were lobbying for them to go into reserves or find the money somewhere rather than slapping a 15% increase on our districts. So that's what we're lobbying for as school board members. The School Construction Authority is working on reforming that department. There's been issues with it over the years. But right now, there's several billion dollars up for grabs. Most of it goes to the schools that are obviously in not as favorable a financial position as ours. We're considered a regular district, not a SDA district. But there will be some money for us. So that's something to look forward to. This is another concerning one. He's kind of fast-tracking a bill for later high school start times. Now, there has been a lot of study on this, a lot of discussion on it for many years now. They've done reports. They've done studies. They've discussed it ad nauseam. Pediatricians have weighed in. Everyone has weighed in. But at this point, with everything that's going on in the state of New Jersey with academic recovery, bus shortages, driver shortages, staff shortages, many of the school districts, and I'm assuming my colleagues will agree, now is not the time. I've already spoken to Senator Carrato about this because that's the first place I go when I see problematic legislation on the move. And she kind of nodded her head and didn't give me a definite answer. But I did weigh in on it with her. So that's, you know, one of the things I get to do, thankfully. And she's always receptive and willing to speak to me on any issue that's going to affect us here in her district. So I appreciate Senator Carrato's ear. The other thing was the food insecurity law, which has been expanded to free school meals. They're increasing the eligibility. They're raising the income limit. And considering the inflation and the cost of food, I'm in agreement on that one. I don't know anyone who wouldn't be. Mental Health Services was another thing he discussed. And tweaking the usage of remote instruction. And by that, I mean, everyone still agrees we want those snow days. But there are other reasons where school might not be able to be in session. Hurricane, power outages, lots of other things. So initially, there was no flexibility because we all agreed that remote learning really wasn't optimal for students, period. The pandemic taught us that. So anyway, that's pretty much it. I do have a complete PowerPoint. For anyone on the Board who would like me to share it with them, send me an email. And it shows all the different bills and what's in them. So if you want any further discussion with the Senator or our representatives, I'll be happy to call a meeting and weigh in whatever your questions or concerns are and get back to you on that. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kazan. The next portion is action on our agenda items.
Madam President?
Yes.
Let's move the entire agenda on consent. I'll second.
Discussion?
I'd like to make a secondary motion.
Mrs. Kazan?
At this time. I'd like to refer Policies 3216 and 4216 back to the Policy Committee. There's been some concerns expressed to me by Board members. And some feel the policy is a little too restrictive and would like us to tweak it.
Thank you.
So if I could get a second and have a vote?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wintick.
You have a roll call on the secondary.
Yes. Please, Mr. Moffett.
Secondary motion. Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
Mrs. Wintick?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Since the Board wants to, yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mr. Fatale?
Yes.
And Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, the rest of the agenda items. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
Mrs. Wintick?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Fatale?
Yes.
And Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their first and last names and their town, their subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under Old Business. Thank you. Do I have a mover?
I'll move.
Second.
Mr. Fatale, Mr. Pavlak. Thank you. Come on up. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marion Moravi. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm actually taller than I thought. I'm Marion Moravi, Pakinak Lake, Wayne, New Jersey. Good evening, Board members and leadership team and stakeholders. As concerned parent and public school teacher, I am here requesting evaluation of an inequitable rubric being utilized to track students in the Wayne Public Schools, primarily the rubric used to identify students in the Track 1A Middle School. My wife and I moved to Pakinak Lake after conducting much research on the school system, athletic programs, and community as a whole. We have been extremely pleased with the entire staff at Pakinak since our children enrolled. My daughter, currently a sixth-grade student, has always excelled academically, especially in ELA. Beginning in January of her fifth-grade year, she was a victim of bullying. However, with the help of the school team and her family, she finished strong. As the year ended, she mentioned to me, to my wife and I, a program called Track 1A. That would be open to students who were selected. We waited until her schedule arrived and were surprised she was not selected, especially for ELA. We followed the chain of command to inquire the reasoning behind this decision since it was not available online anywhere on the district school website. Her current counselor, the vice principal, selected the students. I received an email of the rubric and was surprised to see NJSLA scores that have yet to be released to parents as one of the indicators. According to the rubric, she was close but did not meet the criteria required. The NJSLA scores sent to the district over the summer are considered raw scores, not official scores. Yes, I'm aware of the students who did not meet the proficiency will receive a reevaluation of their score and that those scores who did meet proficiency will not change. Regardless, using this score as one of the categories for the families, even though the score is not the best practice. I continue up the chain to the principal, who has reiterated the rubric and was told that there was about 130 students in this range at GW alone. He was gracious enough to meet with my wife and I and also permitted Kaylee some time to advocate for herself. He was able to give us an alternative option until we continued up the chain of command to the Director of Secondary of Education. We spoke over the phone, and again, the rubric was reiterated to me. So then I emailed Dr., so my wife and I then emailed Dr. Toback and received a reply from Ms. Reichman, to which, I'm sorry if I said the name wrong, to which I requested my daughter to be permitted to speak for a few minutes during the Zoom meeting. The Zoom meeting was during, the Zoom meeting was scheduled with reply. Unfortunately, I'm unable to have Kaylee join the Zoom meeting. Each and every time I met with a team member, I expressed the reasoning behind my dissatisfaction with the rubric and my reasoning. I explained in circumstances that could have potentially affected her performance, not her learning. But I would like to bring my focus to the Zoom meeting with Ms. Reichman. As we logged in, Ms. Reichman was accompanied by Mr. McNelly, the Director of Secondary Education, with patiently listening to both speak and again, reiterate the rubric. Ladies and gentlemen, I was told that this rubric is a model for many districts and changing the rubric would result in watering down the curriculum or hiring new teachers. Also, that differential instruction would be provided to challenger. Watering down the curriculum for a child who scored 87 percentile, a child who not only met proficiency but exceeded the score, a child who comes highly recommended by her teacher, a teacher whose expertise and judgment should be valued at the highest level. Is there any data that shows that children at 87 percentile have been unsuccessful in the past? I highly doubt it. In terms of hiring additional teachers, a certified English teacher can teach Track 1A ELA curriculum. So there is no need to hire additional teachers. In terms of the differential instruction in the regular track, if differential instruction is offered, there are Track 1A students not allowed to have the same. Their curriculum is differentiated. The impression I have received was that this would be a negative, or should I say, an inconvenience to have more sections created for these potential 130 students. We do not even know if these 130 even want to participate in the rigorous curriculum. But for those that do, isn't that what we want? Don't we want highly motivated children who want rigor and have the support of their families and teachers be permitted to enroll? So what if more sections have been created? Is anyone even taking the time to reconsider the applicants whose parents are advocating for them? Do parents do not have the right to advocate for their children's courses in a public setting? The rubric implemented for determining who reenrolls in Track 1A is not only pre-COVID model, but this year, it's included in an additional category. NJSLA 5 scores? Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry. Your five minutes are up.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy Moravi, Pakinak Lake. As the Guidance Chairperson at my high school, where we rank proudly number 45 in U.S. News &amp; World Report, I am responsible for analyzing the data to place our students in Honors and AP courses. In addition to being the PSAT, SAT, and AP coordinator who administered almost 600 AP exams last year, we utilize a holistic approach to ensure that Honors and AP courses are equitable and accessible to all, an approach driven by the data. We are using NJSLA scores for individualized learning plans for staff to implement within the classroom to identify areas that need strengthening, what these scores were meant to be used for. I could guarantee if a parent came to my office with the same situation as Kaylee, my office would be the first and final stop. It would be ridiculous to force a parent to go all the way to the superintendent to receive approval for a more rigorous curriculum in ELA for their child. That would be rewarded and praised for demonstrating the inner motivation and discipline to want to do the extra work, to be challenged, especially when proficiency is not even a question. That is the type of child, at least in my district, our leadership team and teachers want in their challenging courses. There's something about the word holistic that triggers the opposition to start grumbling about participation trophies. In reality, a holistic process is simply one that tries to look at the whole student and not reduce them a mere test score or grade. All factors are considered in an effort to view students as more than just the sum of their parts. Even Harvard University recognizes that standardized tests are not predictors of college success and will not require these scores through 2026. Students post-COVID are still feeling the ripple effects of academic regression. Some may have lost loved ones, been victims of bullying, et cetera. My daughter's circumstances began from January to April. She was tested for NJNSLA during that time. I allowed her to test, assuming the district uses scores to benefit her. Even with the emotional distress she experienced, she still was able to score in the 87th percent. I spoke to her teacher after receiving the news she was not selected. And her teacher, without a doubt, assured me that she will do well in Track 1A and offered her contact email for anyone to reach out. No one did. Instead, I was told that even the teacher's recommendation would not be enough. A teacher recommendation not enough? There were no other factors taken into consideration, not the abundant educational data and research on the effects of COVID had on learning, nor the special circumstances she had overcome. You may say to yourself, she can try again next year. Maybe there's room for flexibility in ELA. But for math Track 1, that's not possible. Math is sequential, and a student does not begin in Track 1A in sixth grade. They cannot enter in seventh or eighth. Again, more information not made public to parents or students. You may say to yourself, what's the big deal You may say to yourself, what's the big deal if she doesn't enroll in honors or AP in high school? The board approved the new district goals last, the last board meeting where weighted GPA will now begin for the rigorous courses. I agree, more work, more reward. GPA, higher GPA equals higher rank. Not, now college is not for everyone. As a US veteran myself, the military, trade schools, and entrepreneurial endeavors are amazing options for students, but you're limiting access and opportunities for those that opt for a four-year degree. If we look at the alignment with the district missions, we do not meet that. Number one, compassion is not demonstrated in this rigid rubric. Number two, my child wants rigor, she's advocating for herself and being denied. Number three, during the meeting, I received no indication that there would be any reevaluation of the current rubric. Instead, Ms. Reichman praised that the current model offending us by insinuating that the district would have to water down the curriculum if my my child's range would be permitted. Number four, we provide students with equitable access. My daughter does not have equitable access to this program, a program that could empower her and challenge her. I propose what is done in many districts I conferred with, use a holistic approach and make sure it begins in first grade, not two weeks before sixth grade begins. She is smart, hardworking, and motivated, but she possesses the single most important factor in not just academic success, but life in general, the ability to be resilient. Resiliency is what all of our children demonstrated during COVID and continue to demonstrate. Our children are not just scores on an Excel sheet. You can filter and sort to accommodate the master schedule at the school level in terms of staffing. They are much more than that. Thank you so much.
Kaylee Moravi Pakanak Lake. Good evening, Board members and Wayne Leadership Team. Our greatest weakness is giving up. The most certain way to succeed is to always try just one more time. That was a famous quote by Thomas Edison. It has inspired me to try so hard to be in the advanced classes, from working hard in school and now standing in front of all of you, advocating for myself. I was always very determined to be in honors and it all started in January when I started to get bullied by people I thought were my friends. This made me realize that looks and popularity does not matter now and it won't later, but will but what will matter is my grades in the classes I'm in. Kids who get bullied are most are more likely to experience anxiety, depression, health complaints, and decreased school performance. There was a time where I wanted to transfer schools and wasn't focused in class. Thanks to my family, friends, Ms. Reska, my school counselor, and my fifth grade teacher, Ms. Rocco, who taught me ELA and math, I was able to overcome the bullying and isolation. Even through all the bullying, isolation, and global pandemic, I was able to still work hard and do the best I can for this program. The school may not give it a second thought, but these classes and my grades now will affect my future as a student and young woman. Adults need to take special cases into consideration and allow students like myself to rise to the occasion. Trust me, you will be impressed. I know school just started, but I am currently averaging at a 98% with Ms. Fasiola, the ELA teacher who teaches track 1A ELA. Ms. Rocco would say that I am an amazing writer. She believed in me, so now I have the confidence to know that I can do anything I put my mind to. I believe that I am good enough to be in these classes. I am willing to go above and beyond to be in these classes and I was shocked when Ms. Reichman said that the district would have to water down the curriculum. I am a very hardworking and talented student. For Ms. Reichman to not even be willing to talk to me really disappointed me. I am willing to change myself. I would, I am willing to challenge myself in any test or assignment I receive. So all I am asking is for a chance, a chance to show the school how great I could be and not by just and not just by test scores. I am, I am now afraid to take these tests again. Will it be used against me? Those standardized scores are not a reflection of who I am. I am a natural leader. I have my own babysitting business and I am a multi-talented performer. Over the summer, there was an ELA enrichment program that I did not need to attend, but volunteered my time to be ready if I was chosen for the track 1A classes. The teacher was very impressed with my writing and public speaking skills and selected me to be the leader of my group. This is another example of my work ethic. My negative experiences has changed me for the better. Everyone around me seems to believe in me and my abilities. All I am, all I am asking is for the team members who represent the Wayne schools, the Wayne Public Schools to believe in me too. Thank you for your time.
Frances Galley, Wayne. On August 18th, I stood at this podium and I addressed a couple of concerns I had regarding some curriculum items. I addressed them simply because I wanted to open the eyes to the denial that certain things were actually transpiring in the schools. I brought up several examples, however, for some reason, the traction of incest seemed to be the salacious headline. I get it, totally inappropriate. District felt it was inappropriate when I raised it to them and they immediately, within 24 hours of my speaking with that district administrator, removed those examples. The lesson was skipped in the classes that it was not covered in yet because the handout had already been provided to the students. So to try and remove those two would have caused a bigger stir. So no, the lesson was not permanently removed from the curriculum to suggest that would be inappropriate. The examples removed because they were deemed to be inappropriate. So I found myself really puzzled watching the tail end of last week's or two weeks ago Board of Ed meeting, when I seemed to become the focus point of some pretty salacious accusations towards me. I tried to resolve those someplace other than this podium, but that meeting was denied. It was met with Mrs. Galley. Why? You had your chance to speak, so did I. I never imagined that this was the way this board was going to operate. 19 years I've been in this district. I'm not tooting my own horn. I've lost count at the hundreds of hours I have dedicated to this district to improve everything focusing on the child. So to have my reputation, I'll stop there. I'm going to just highlight a few of the misinformation that was provided at the tail end of the last Board of Ed meeting. She didn't have a child in the class. It's thrown out twice in that presentation. I have her transcript. My daughter took the class. Did she have to listen to the lesson? No, because the respect of the district administration had on me responded to me at seven o'clock that night when I emailed and within 24 hours, as I said, it was removed. So does it make the lesson any better because my daughter didn't have to listen to it? No. The same lesson has been taught for the last eight years. Not exactly. How do I know? My oldest son sat in that same classroom eight years ago with that exact same teacher. So the lesson on more dilemmas absolutely has been in the curriculum. Those two examples? No. I did my homework. I spoke to students who took those classes during COVID. You think those lessons were talked over Google meets? I don't think so. I didn't go to the teacher, principal, administrator. Four times when I stood at this podium, I'd made reference to talking to administration. There was even a quote, thank you, Ferris. The point is, you took care of it. You reported it, you did it correctly, and it was removed, was it not? To which I said it was. The point of the lesson was taken out of context and it may never be taught again. No, not accurate. That lesson's still there. Those examples aren't. Point of the lesson wasn't, I never had an issue with the lesson. I had an issue with those examples. I also had an issue when my daughter was inappropriately surveyed about what she'd do when if she found herself pregnant with the suggestion that would she abort the baby? Somehow that was lost. Quote, "To besmirch a teacher's reputation that way without having all the facts was despicable," close quote. Quote, "To come in here and make a theatrical presentation and trash someone's reputation is just not right," end quote. I challenge whose reputation was trashed. I never once uttered the word teacher when I stood at this podium. I never once laid blame at the teacher. Why? It wasn't the teacher's fault. The teacher told the kids it wasn't his lesson. Do you think these health lessons, we should blame the teacher? They didn't write the lessons. We just spent how many weeks talking about the lessons that a committee created? So why would I blame a teacher? That's not who I am. So why were my words so twisted and concepts fabricated? Why fabricate the storyline that a parent was trashing a teacher? Maybe that was a desired reaction. Perhaps it fit a narrative. Perhaps to change the focus from the issue and target the messenger. The word fear was used to insinuate that that was my calculated motive. Nothing is further from the truth. Fear is an overused slogan these days for political playbooks I don't subscribe to and I won't be a pawn in that game. Neither will my daughter or administration that was dragged into this. 19 years in this district, I want to be perfectly clear and thank Dr. Toback and his entire administration down to the teachers who understand who I am and respect me when I raise issues to them and this is no different. His administration valued my opinion, corrected the issue, and guess what? The teacher and the school administrators, they know why I raised it. I don't think they were happy I stood here and raised it, but they understood why. Never.
All your time is up.
Can I end with two sentences, please?
Certainly.
We say we want to put our children first. Can I just share? Do you know who's writing my daughter's college letter of recommendation? Her AP psychology teacher, the very teacher that it was suggested I besmirched and trashed. Do you know what she wants to be when she grows up, ever since she's been a little girl? A teacher. Think about that and ask yourself, was a two and a half minutes worth it?
Good evening. Norman Robertson, I'm a Wayne resident. I have to say, I'm honored to be following the last four speakers. And young lady, you can be very proud of your mom and dad, too. I'm going to speak about something that is not as consequential as what you've heard from the last four people. I thought about our last meeting in the days that followed and something occurred to me that I didn't mention the last time I was here. There was obviously some sort of discussion that was held in the executive session prior to coming out here to discuss the curriculum. That's the health curriculum. It was being discussed down the hall. Maybe it was having to do with the administration and why the vote had to be taken tonight? I don't know, I wasn't there. Maybe it had something to do with the legal aspect of it, but I'm not sure, I wasn't there. I want to read to you something that the legislature had said a long time ago. The legislature finds and declares that the right of the public to be present at all meetings of public bodies and to witness in full detail all phases of the deliberation, policy formation, and decision-making of public bodies. They said it was vital to the enhancement and proper functioning of a democratic process. Did it ever occur to you folks that you might have been violating the open public meetings law? Oh, I don't doubt it. I don't doubt it. And yet, it was stated from the days that that was the most divisive issue in your experience, huh? And I don't doubt that either. One of the reasons that parents are frustrated, and I've spoken to a lot of parents during this last year, is that you don't provide a way for parents to talk on this side of the room, to talk to parents on that side of the room. You give them something to fill out, you know, on the on the website to give input and then it's a question of, oh, you know, can our side put more in than their side? You had a wonderful opportunity last October when this whole room was filled with people on each side of this aisle. And I was looking forward to it because I wanted to hear what the other side was saying. And I mean the other geographical side because frankly, everyone's a neighbor. But the quorum was defeated by the president and the vice president of the board, who had the opportunity to hold that discussion and chose not to do so. That's disgraceful. Now, I don't know what happened in there. Maybe I could find out from the minutes, but generally speaking, the minutes don't come out until five months from now, which PS is also a violation of the open public meetings law, which said that the they shall be promptly available to the public. Five months is not prompt because that's when it shows up on your agenda. But does anybody notice that? I mean, maybe, I mean, I realize I've been in public bodies, so I would tend to notice it more quickly. I'm an attorney, I tend to notice it more quickly. But it's got to, you know, it certainly has to appeal to your attorney, it certainly has to appear to your superintendent. I have yet to see a real debate from this body on any subject. You might explain how you voted a certain way, you know, oh, well, yeah, and we saw from from the last meeting that there had to be a discussion back there. And it's time for you to come clean and tell us what what happened back there. I spoke to the HIV coordinator who made such a nice presentation tonight and I asked him one question. I said, is it fair to say that no matter how a report of bullying comes to you, you're going to take care of it? No matter how it comes, if it comes into a custodian, if it comes into a guidance counselor, if it comes into a teacher, that they will start the ball rolling? That's what you should be doing with parents' concerns and very often you do. And I've heard people who've gotten notes back from the superintendent, but you can't operate in the dark. I can't tell you how frustrating it is for me as a citizen and as a former office holder who's sat through numerous meetings of this time. No, I'm not quite done yet. Very close, though. There. Thank you.
Hi, Ryan Baddishill, Wayne. Firstly, I want to thank the HIV presentation. I thought that was great. That was, I was really pleased to see that through all of this, the bureaucracy that is being pushed down on us is not being pushed down on everybody else. And I think that that's a good way of being able to implement some of the procedures and policies that come down. Can't hear? Is that better? Thank you. So I'm pleased to be able to see that we're able to remove a lot of that bureaucracy coming down. I hope we can find from all of the DNI-based presentations that we've seen over the years, a real ECDW way to solve Kaylee's problem. I think that, you know, we always think about DNI in terms of helping people at various different stages that are not necessarily doing as well as other people. Someone who wants to go through and do more and really push for more, we should be trying to help them and find an equitable solution to that kind of problem, right? Get people to be the best people that they can. That is the point of DNI. That is the point of equity. So I really hope you take that into account and find a way to solve her problem. The opt-out form, which I'm glad to see is getting used by a number of people, so that means that we've done a good job of being able to get it out there in front of people and so on. I do think the language issue is a concern. The response that came back on the language issue was to just go and use Google Translate and cut and paste things into Google Translate. A number of other districts have actually translated it ahead of time. And the reason to do that is if you go look at Google Translate and what it does, it doesn't take context into account when it does the translation. And this can very easily end up with things like sexual education being turned into very inappropriate words in foreign languages. So you'll probably want to go back and look at that and make sure that when people are translating that, at least to common other languages around Wayne, that we're not putting those things into a bad position for other people to go back and read. And the receipt that comes back from filling in the form, it's common practice when someone hands something into you, especially something that they are expecting to be done to ensure that that gets a receipt back. We do, we had this discussion as well about the Let's Talk app and making sure that that gets something. As a parent, you're never sure if you've pushed the button or not, especially those people that are not so sure about technology and so on, making sure that that comes back with a, hey, yeah, we've got it, we know that we're going to do something. You don't even have to say what it is that you're doing with it, but just we got it. That's an important aspect of being able to use technology to increase the communication with the community. And then my final comments, I think I want to reiterate a lot of what Fran said. I had a whole set of stuff in here that was not as eloquent as what Frances said on her side of things. This board that is meant to unite this community is really pushing for a lot of division out of comments like that. We can't be going through and stopping parents from making the proper complaints in the proper ways and raising those things up. We need to encourage communication. We need to get people coming out and talking to us. I personally spent a large part of Wayne Day talking to a number of parents at that time and I asked every single one of them, how's your school? What do your kids think of the teachers? Every single one of them loved the school, loved the teachers without exception. Anyone who spoke to me about problems with busing, for example, and the two-mile rule on busing, or special needs education and getting the right people in for the special needs, they had problems with the processes. They had problems with getting to the point of finding how to do things, very much like this poor family, who didn't know how to go through and get to the point of advocating in the right way. They're left alone, they're just told no at the first step. Nobody's telling them, this is how you'd go next. If you've got a problem, if you want to go further, this is what they're going to need to see. Let's help people get through these things. Let's help people get through their IAPs. Let's help people get through the things that they need to do so that they are put in the right place. We have great people all the way down the process. When you find the right person, when you find the right form, when you get in front of the right things, we're just missing that transparency and that communication that brings all of that together. And I think that every time we say transparency, you think about some amazing set of stuff that you need to go through and do. It's about bringing us along with the journey. It's about making sure that people get what they need out of the process and not going back and vilifying how parents and teachers don't get on because that's just not true. Thank you. Thank you.
Laura Walker, Wayne. I am very nervous right now. Have not been to a Board of Ed meeting, ever. I am a graduate of Wayne Hills High School, 1996. I am a proud Wayne resident. I have two very small children, ages six and three. My son is a first grader. I'm here tonight to ask or to beg, I'm not here to say that you're doing a terrible job. I'm not here to criticize your work. You have a huge job for our children. I am asking, if at all possible, I understand the sex ed curriculum is a state requirement. You are limited in what you can do. But can you please change the opt-out to opt-in? It will give parents the opportunity to think about the curriculum, to make the choice for their children, rather than a parent, two parents who are working incessantly, round the clock, who don't have that opportunity to log on and understand that they actually have to remove their child from the class and say, "No, I do not want this taught." That is the only request that I have, is for that process to be thought about, because as of right now, if I hadn't taken the time to look at the curriculum and go through every slide, I may have had my son subjected to something that I don't approve. And I am his parent. I am my daughter's parent. It is my choice what my child learns in an explicit manner. This is explicit content in fifth grade, very explicit. It's more explicit than I was ever exposed to as a child. Children are very impressionable. Things that are put in their mind can be twisted into different things. We have teachers teaching these curriculums who feel exceptionally uncomfortable. What is the chance that a teacher teaches a child about some of these things that are in the fifth grade specific curriculum, which, by the way, doesn't even affect my child? My child's in first grade. So the curriculum for a first grader is not even as explicit. What if that child somehow twists that and it becomes, "The teacher's doing something to me"? How do we identify sexual abuse? How do we identify child abuse? There's going to be a blurred line. I only ask, and I do not want to take much of your time, is to please reconsider the opt-out subject and make it opt-in for parents, so they can have the choice. I know you're limited in what you can do, and your hands are somewhat tied, but you can do that for us, and it would be a huge, huge thing for the parents of our community. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, people in the audience. My name is Michael Goddisman. I am a 37-year resident of Wayne. Both of my children went through the school system, and thank God, they're both very successful in what they do today. I've come up here just to, just to address a few things that were mentioned at the last meeting after I had already spoken, and some of the things that were mentioned tonight. I want to say that I do feel for the person that came up before me and her concerns about the curriculum. And I do not dismiss those concerns. But I think we've gone through this on numerous occasions, and unfortunately, it is not the prerogative or the ability of this board to make the curriculum opt-in instead of opt-out. And there's a reason for that. And that's because there has to be a choice made. And if you look at the statistics that were presented by Dr. Toback at the beginning of this meeting, of all students, 307 out of 2,803, I believe it was, have parents who have chosen to opt-out. Comes to 10.8%. Parents have the ability to opt-out. That's their right. It has been not recently existing, but for 42 years. It's not something new. And the question is, do we put an obstacle up for the 89.2% of the parents that do not have an objection to the curriculum, to satisfy the 10.8, that have the absolute right to opt-out and remove that curriculum from the education of their children? I don't think that it is equitable or right to put that obstacle up for 89.1% of the people that want their children to be a part of that curriculum. At the last meeting, a resident of Wayne came up, and he implied that some of the board members were told that they had to vote for the curriculum. I have a question for that resident. Who told him that? Was it in writing, or was it vocal? Did he bother to try and verify that? Has the state of New Jersey or the DOJ issued an edict to that effect? Or were we just hearing supposition? There are facts, and there are supposition. And unfortunately, a similar implication was made by that same resident tonight, when he was talking about the goings-on in the hallway or in the back rooms. And he talked about how the board's responsibility is to bring people together. And yet, what he spoke about tonight was telling people to have, to sow mistrust in what this board does. To me, that's not getting people together, that's being divisive. And in fact, when he talked about it, he said, "I wasn't there, but..." And that's the point. You weren't. You have no idea what went on, and yet you're sowing these seeds of distrust. The other thing, the final thing I'm going to address is the Open Public Meeting Act. The implication was made that it is absolute and that everything this board does has to be done in front of the public. Well, I can tell you, that is a misstatement. Because if you were here and the board was discussing your contract and what they were going to offer you and the negotiations that they were going to have, I'm sure you wouldn't want that done in public. And it's not supposed to be. And if there was an HR problem relating to your behavior in the classroom and whether it was appropriate and was grounds for discipline or dismissal, I'm sure that you wouldn't want to have this board discussing that in public. So don't be misled. The Open Public Meeting Act is not absolute. Let's not try and play the fact again that this board is not being transparent, because they've been more transparent today and in the past year than they have before.
Mr. Goddisman.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bubba. Excuse me, vote, please. Roll call.
I have one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, the motion has already been made.
I just wanted to know.
No, I'm sorry, the motion has been made.
I want to know what happens to the kids who opt-out in their grade suffer. What happens to the kids who opt-out?
You're welc-, excuse me, you are welcome to come up and ask the administration after the meeting. Thank you. We can't answer the question up at the podium anyway. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Duffy and Mr. Bubba, roll call. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't need a roll call. Pardon me. Okay, old business? Old business? Thank you. New business? Mrs. Kazan?
Sorry.
Excuse me, just a moment.
Excuse me, Mrs. Kazan, can we please stop the side conversations? If I can hear you up here, I need you to... Thank you.
This is National Book Banning Week. I thought that was interesting. I didn't know that was a thing. I happened upon a TV program today where it was a topic, where it was a topic of discussion. And what I found interesting about this program was, you know, they looked at it from all sides. They talked to parents who were for the books, they talked to parents who were against the books, and there was this one particular group, a woman who was from Atlanta, Georgia. She runs a group called Moms for Liberty, which she claims is a parental rights group. But the host of the show pretty much pointed out that they were really a political action-type group, and that their real goal, and she didn't deny it, is to take over school boards, rewrite policy, and ban books. So this is more, most likely why they were invited to the show, because it was National Book Banning Week. And it was also made clear during the show that that group has some, how shall I put it, members in our community, which I find a little unsettling, because I think if we want to be a united community, the last thing we need are people who want to go out of their way to infiltrate our education system and be the deciders of what child gets to read what. That decision should be up to our educators. The people who we task with doing that professional job, our media specialists, et cetera. So I'm just letting you know, this is a national issue, but guess what? It's local as well. You need to pay attention, you need to see what people's platforms are, and if that's the kind of thing they support in this upcoming November election. I have concerns. Another topic. I wasn't going to say anything, Mr. Robertson, but I'm going to make a statement, and I was going to leave you out of it, but since you brought it up again... You can't hear me?
No, just that last part.
I said I wasn't going to bring this up, but since you mentioned it, I've decided to do so. At the September 8th meeting, a member of the community, you, came up to the podium and mentioned something that had basically just happened in our executive session. So you just stood here and claimed you have no idea what went on there. I find that interesting. And that was of great concern to me, because executive session is meant to be confidential. And you know that. Everything is not available to the public under the Open Public Meetings Act. So at the conclusion of the meeting, I went over to that administrative dais, and I asked you, because you mentioned it again, that who told board members they had to vote? If they didn't, they'd be brought up on ethics charges. And I said, "Well, where did you get that information from, Mr. Robertson?" And you were quite frank with me. You told me. A certain board member, sitting on the edge of the dais there, told you that. You said it to me in front of witnesses, sitting there and sitting in the audience. They corroborate what you said.
I never actually listened to you.
Thank you. I took the time to review the tape, because I was concerned, who could possibly have shared executive privilege? I noticed that there was texting going on during the meeting, which has always been a concern of mine. I remember when Loretta Weinberg was in the Senate, and she was actually, I believe, working on this with Senator Carrato. They had a great relationship. And I'm sorry to see Mrs. Weinberg is no longer in that body, because she was a phenomenal leader, always bipartisan, and a great lady. And one of the things she championed, but was never able to get it carved in stone, as it were, was no personal devices during a public meeting. And I agree with her, because there's a lot of reasons not to have a personal device during a public meeting. It erodes the public trust. It opens up suspicion of collusion between people sitting up here, people sitting out there, or even people at home. This is not the sort of thing that should be going on. It also says, basically, they're not here, they're not in the moment, they're not paying attention. You elected them to sit up here and be attentive and to pay attention to what's going on during these proceedings. Now, I say all this not to target you, not to target him. I don't plan to take this, I don't plan to take this any further, but I am pointing this out, because this is the sort of thing that this gentleman just said, erodes the public trust. We can't have that. We need board members trustees who are trustworthy. So that said, I would really like to make a motion that we amend a couple of policies and potentially limit the use of personal devices through our own local policy, so we don't have this issue going forward. But that, of course, will be up to the board. There's a couple of policies that include that language, and I'll make the motion to revisit Policy 0169, Board Member Use of Electronics, and Conduct of Board Meetings, 0164. That's my motion. If anyone is wishing to help me in that regard, so that we can restore trust to the board, I would appreciate it.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Bubba.
Do you have a question? Is this the Senate's policy for review?
To go to Policy Committee for Review.
Discussion? Discussion?
Discussion, sure.
Can I make mention?
Yes. Mr. Prasakos.
So I've never been more insulted and offended in my life.
There's a motion on the floor. You can address that after we discuss the motion. We're discussing the motion right now.
The motion.
Yeah. I'm just giving you a point of information.
I'm in full agreement about the electronic policy.
Okay.
And, you know, I mean, I'll go on record as soon as this descends.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion about the motion on the table? I'll wait. Thank you. There's a motion on the table to revisit the electronic policy. Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
If I could restate the resolution before the board? So the board has Policy Electron-, Policy Number 10, I should say, 0169 and 0164 as it relates to electronic devices at board meetings. Go back to Policy Committee for Review.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll take roll. Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
No, we're adults. We don't have to be told.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes, actually.
Mrs. Wintick?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
No.
Mr. Fatale?
I'll send the back, I'll take the review.
I'll record that as a yes. Mrs. Putta?
No.
Five motion carries.
Thank you. Any other, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Fatale and then Mr. Prasakos?
In regards to this, are we allowed to get, prior to our meeting, the chair of the policy committee?
In your honor?
Yes. So we have input from other board members prior to the meeting?
They're free to text, email us with their concerns and questions.
They're free to weigh in.
The board to email their concerns prior to the Policy Committee meeting.
Please do.
So...
Okay.
The board was to send it to the Policy Committee.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Prasakos?
We're still in new business?
Yes.
My field business.
My field business by now, you're right.
So over the last week, six days, actually, I've never been more insulted and offended in my life. There was an Oprah request put in for my text messages. And I'll go on record right now, I did not-
In regards to this, are we allowed to get prior to our meeting, be the chair of the policy committee?
In your honor.
Yes. So we have input from other board members prior to the meeting?
They're free to email us with their concerns and questions.
They're free to weigh in.
The board to email their concerns prior to the Policy Committee meeting.
Please do.
So.
Okay.
The board was to send it to the Policy Committee.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Prasakos?
We're still in new business?
Yes.
My field business.
My field business by now, you're right.
So over the last week, six days, actually, I've never been more insulted and offended in my life. There was an Oprah request put in for my text messages. And I'll go on record right now, I did not have any outgoing text messages on the September 8th meeting. What I was doing was when Mr. Vanderburg came up during the public portion, he asked why I voted no. I was searching my emails to find my feedback from more than three weeks prior to that meeting, so five weeks ago, of my feedback that I provided to this board and to the superintendent regarding the health of that curriculum, to refresh my memory. So I was having trouble searching for it. So the accusation that I was text messaging was offensive because it meant that...
An Oprah request is not an accusation. It's just a request.
Oh. So, and then there was another, all right, anyway.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Excuse me. I apologize to you, Mr. Prasakos, for the interruption.
That's okay.
Please proceed.
So it insinuated that I didn't know the rules, the policy, you know, of which we've had ethics classes. We've been told, do not text, you know, during the public session. So that insinuates that I'm stupid. You know, my profession is, I'm a banker. I've taken more confidentiality and compliance classes than, I think, almost everyone here on this board, times two. So, you know, to insinuate that I was breaching confidentiality during our executive session was a real offense to me, and that I was texting during the meeting. So I just wanted to go on record with that.[713.13][713.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Does administration have any comment for this evening?
Mrs. Reichman will be back. She has a few things.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Okay.
I see it was off the dais.
So Mrs. Reichman is going to address the Track 1A topic, okay? Mr. Batter, I know that you talked about the Google Translate issue, so we can certainly look at that. That's something that's standard, that's used in districts all across the country for helping parents if there's a need to translate. But certainly, we could look at the concern that you raised. I don't know what to say about that. I mean, so the other thing is, I would like to, we've discussed the opt-in versus the opt-out option on a number of occasions. So I understand not everybody is necessarily able to attend board meetings. So what I would like to do is ask Mr. Geppert to, once again, to explain about the opt-in versus opt-out and what's allowable and what's not allowable.
Yes, just to help clarify the situations, as I've explained before, the opt-out provision is provided by state statute. And I think we can answer a couple of questions, because you asked one and the woman in the back asked. And just to share that with you, it states, "Any child whose parent or guardian presents to the school principal a signed statement that any part of the instructions in health, family life, education, or sex education is in conflict with his conscience, or sincerely held moral or religious beliefs, shall be excused from that portion in the course where such instruction is being given, and no penalties as to credit or graduation shall result therefrom." So for the second question, the statute itself says there can be no penalties as to credit or graduation shall result therefrom. So those individuals are protected from any retaliation. It'd be a violation of law. And this is what the legislature and the governor had passed as a law. They provided that a school district can opt out parents if they want to. There is no statutory authority to do an opt-in situation as you requested. So unfortunately, that's driven by the law.
Thank you, Mr. Geppert. Mrs. Reichman?
I just wanted to respond to Kaylee and her family. Kaylee, I wanted to applaud you for coming tonight. I think it takes a great deal of confidence. You're an eloquent speaker. You advocated for yourself. You have drive, ambition. You have it all going on, and that was tremendous. And it was really important and great for me to hear what you had to say. I apologize that I wasn't able to speak with you during the Zoom call. I've never had students leave class and enter a Zoom parent meeting before, and I have to make sure that I'm fair and equitable for all students. I would be happy if you emailed me to come over to your school and speak with you more. And I guess the only other thing I wanted to say is, you do have an opportunity to re-qualify. And Kaylee, I wanted to also thank your parents for coming tonight. And I think it's important for every parent to advocate for their children. There are many, many requests for meetings, and I know the administrators talk and meet with every parent at their request. If it's moved up to me, I always take those calls, which we did have an exchange. But please know, there is a process that's in place. It's always revisited. I have a great deal of experience. I actually came to the district 20 years ago as a gifted and talented teacher. I applied for a fellowship through the Gifted Institute, attended, I was awarded it, attended the Ranzilli Institute. So I have significant training and background in GNT instruction. There are multiple measures. There's a qualifying score in each category. It is a very, very rigorous process, but you do not have to meet the qualifications in every category. The standardized test is one category. We look at the benchmarks, and I'm happy to talk to you about that. But please know, you do have an opportunity to re-qualify again, and I would encourage you to communicate with your teacher and share your aspirations, share your ambitions. They will be your greatest cheerleaders. And we'll do whatever we can to support you on your end to be successful in meeting your goal. So I hope you reach out to me, and I hope we can continue the conversation. And thank you for coming tonight.[1017.32][1017.32](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Moffett would like, there was a statement made about minutes, and so there are a lot that, there's a lot that goes on in developing minutes. So he's going to talk about that for a minute.
Right. I would like to say, I have experience in other districts, and what we have here in Wayne is, we have live, you know, a program is right now live, right? So not only is that part of the minutes ultimately, we have also Board Docs. So remember, this video is being taped. It'll be available. The township has been fantastic on getting that information over to us, and they usually post it within the next day. Once that video, there's a video between this location, as well as what we call the PWS meeting, which is held up in the board office. That video is usually available by the Tuesday following the board meeting. Again, that is also part of our minutes. It's also really recorded and broadcast continually on our YouTube channel. Again, as our technology has advanced here in town, we also acquired a software package which is called Board Docs, which is probably a lot of what you see in front of you is actually, tonight's agenda is actually generated from that system. And in that system, not only do you have the formal written minutes, but you also have embedded within the technology the video for posterity. So that is part of the minutes. So if there's any question on who said what, or how things were presented in the public meeting, you can access that either on the YouTube channel or through Board Docs. And that's what I'll say as far as regular meetings. We do have special meetings, our executive session meetings that are confidential. I think that was raised here today. And those do have confidentiality issues, and they're very generic, and they are not provided for the general public to view on our website or through Board Docs. So I just wanted to make that clear to the people that may be listening tonight and are here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Mr. Fatale?
Short and sweet. Like to wish both Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley good luck tomorrow night. Those who are going, remember to wear orange so we could all support Rocco, his family, and keep his memory living on. So good luck to both schools tomorrow night.
Thank you. Mr. Prasakos?
I just wanted to make mention, you know, all the back-to-school nights are going out, and it's nice to see all the people. I was at the Randall Carter back-to-school night the other night. It was standing room only, so it was great that everyone was able to experience what their children go through every day. I wanted to thank the PTOs and encourage everyone to join their PTOs. They're very important. They provide a lot of enrichment to their students. I also was able to participate in Wayne Day back on Sunday. I want to thank the organizers, Mr. Graziano, Mr. Reutman, and everyone else. It was a great event. The Wayne Board of Ed had a nice booth. Everybody was able to sign up and go out there. And during Wayne Day, I was able to speak to some of the principals and administrators, and the principals were very complimentary and very excited about the SROs that we hired to be into the elementary schools. So all the elementary, middle schools, high schools, it was, you know, it was great that we have money well spent there. And good luck to both Wayne Valley and Wayne Hills. There'll be one winner tomorrow. Orange out. I got my Rocco t-shirt, so I'll be there. Kaylee Moravy, I hope I said it correctly, you're in my daughter's class, so I believe in both of you, and I believe in all the children here in Wayne, and that's why I'm here. So thank you.[1266.23][1266.23](APPLAUSE). You guys are going to go far. I hope you guys, you get together with my daughter, so you guys can really go far. Mrs. Galley, thank you for coming to set the record straight. I think it's very important to be setting the record straight here, and thank you for everyone else that came up here. And, you know, regarding the previous accusation, like I said, you know, I'm a new board member, and, you know, I don't like playing games, and I don't like nonsense, and I don't like to see wasted money and wasted resources. So to pursue, you know, an allegation that I was texting, you know, I'm going on record to say that I was not texting, and there are absolutely no outgoing text messages, whether private or business, board business-related text messages on there. So please do not waste the Board of Ed and the Wayne District's money. These hard-working taxpayers don't need subpoenas and other BS, you know, because I did not freaking text message.[1336.33][1336.33](APPLAUSE).
Mrs. Kazan?
Well, since he brought it up again, I need to respond. Let me explain something. It's very simple.
Excuse me.
There is something called the public record, and the board meeting has to be entirely reported to the public. You just spoke about transparency, Mr. Robertson. So if anyone is sitting up here using a personal device and texting for whatever, I don't know what's happening on someone's phone if it's in their hand. I have no way of knowing whether they're receiving messages in, sending messages out. An Oprah request is not an accusation. It's just that. It's a request. It costs the district zero. They sent him an email. He got to respond to it. So no one was accused. He can be as irate and upset as he wants to be. It's not an accusation. It's a request. The request was, what's the word I'm looking for? Brought out because of you, Mr. Robertson, because you plainly stated to me that Mr. Prasakos told you what went on in executive session. That's a problem. So that needed to be looked into, and that is all. And problem solved, discussion over, and whoever wants to pursue it is up to them. I, for one, have no interest in filing ethics charges. I was the recipient of them. I know full well what a waste of time it is, and quite frankly, tens of thousands of dollars involved. Why would I do it to someone else? I just wanted to set the record straight and make sure that Mr. Prasakos understood that it's not appropriate to tell you what's going on in executive session. Thank you.
Yes. Excuse me.
Yeah.[1453.32][1453.32](APPLAUSE). I don't want to waste everyone's time, but let me also go on the record, I did not verbalize or say anything that happened to the executive session to anyone. So just want to put that on the record as well.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Pavlak?
Just a couple of quick things. One, good luck to Wayne Valley, Wayne Hills tomorrow night. I'm sure it's going to be a great game. Mr. Robertson, I can assure you, nothing went on in executive session that was not supposed to go on in executive session, because if it was, I wouldn't be in the room. All right? I can assure you that. Secondly, and finally, I think we have to heed our own words that we read. We have to heed our own words that we read before the public session. Everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlak. Any other board member? Mrs. Wintick?
Kaylee, I'm so proud of you. It was so brave of you to come here and speak in front of all these people. You are going far places. I too was told, I think in the eighth grade, that I'm not a college material, and I finished master's program in a different language. So don't let anyone stop you. I'm really proud of you, and I will too join you tomorrow at the Wayne Hills and Valley games, wearing my orange shirt, so I'm really excited. Go, everyone. Go Wayne.
My husband and I attended the 9/11 ceremony at Town Hall 11 days ago. Not too many people came out for two years because of COVID, so it was really nice to go down there. So thanks to the mayor and Parks and Rec Department. First responders were there, our police, firemen, first aid squad. Two terrific Wayne Valley vocalists sang. We had trumpeters from Wayne Hills, a Boy Scout troupe, Mikey Sherrill spoke, and Kristen Carrato. And we had the bagpipe and drums, which always gets me. I remember 9/11 strangely, with sharp detail about minute details that contrast with a kind of dream fog around other parts. I was a librarian at Albert Pace and Terre Haute School at the time. Fairly early in the morning, I saw George Rose, a fifth-grade teacher, making his way across the media center toward me with a very strange look on his face. He said, "Do you have a cable TV hookup here in the library?" I said, "Yeah," and I motioned to the back corner where the cart was. He goes, "You have to turn it on, because people will need to come down and see this." We moved some of the cubicle screens so that any students coming in and out of the library couldn't see. And as teachers got release time, they came into the library to see what was going on. It looked like a scene from a Godzilla movie with the billowing smoke coming out of the And then parents started coming to school to pick up their students, which alarmed the students that were left behind. How come Katie's mom came to pick her up? How come Joey had to go home? So our job was to keep the children calm and safe. We all did it. Our principal, the secretary fielded communications like crazy, the nurse, the custodian, everybody chipped in. And then we had bomb threats in some of the buildings in Wayne. The police came to help us, to make sure the kids were safe, the teachers were safe, the other staff members were safe, to have traffic flow in and out of the buildings to get kids safely home. At the end of the day, everybody in Wayne, all our kids, were okay. And on 9/11, we put our kids first. They just happened to be your kids that day. So I think that was also the thought that went through the teachers' minds in Sandy Hook, Parklands, and Uvalde. And I think that's what all of us want to do, is keep our children safe. So despite the rhetoric, and sometimes the heated arguments and occasional bad feelings, it all goes back to the kids. So thank you. Thank you for those of you who appeared at the podium tonight. Good luck at the Hills and Valley game tomorrow night. Both teams and the back-to-school nights have been wonderful. So I thank you, everyone's participation. Have a very good evening. Motion to adjourn.
Move to close.
Thank you. Thank you.